May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Rockham County School Board to order. Welcome to all of you here. We're glad that you were able to be with us this evening. The first item of business that we have is to approve tonight's operating agenda, and I will entertain a motion in that regard if it be your wish.
I move for approval of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Lower. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of tonight's agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is five-oh. At this time, I'd like to invite all of those who are able to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where rich and poor stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence, meditation, or prayer. Thank you very much. We will move right into recognitions and presentations, and we have some school recognitions, which are always great to see. And I don't have on my agenda who's going to be doing those, I'm sorry to say. So, Phil Judge is going to be doing them. That makes perfectly good sense.
Chairman Breeden, members of the school board, Dr. Scheichel, and other guests in attendance tonight, welcome to Turner Ashby High School. We appreciate the opportunity to host the school board meeting tonight. TA is truly an amazing school with outstanding students and a wonderful community, and we are grateful for the support we receive and the tremendous accomplishments of our students. At this time, I want to introduce the administrative staff here, the three assistant principals here at Turner Ashby High School that take care of a lot of things behind the scenes and in front of the scenes. Mindy Shiflett, Chris Knoll, and Will Crockett are the three assistant principals here, and without those three, we would have a difficult time functioning every day. We are pleased to be able to recognize several members of the TA community tonight for their accomplishments, their character, and their service. I would like for Ava Grace Florrie, D.R. Jalil, and their parents, and Cindy Warner to come down front, please. The hard part is deciding what to leave out and limiting the recognition in the best interest of time here. But just some of the highlights. I want to recognize first Ava Grace Florrie, and D.R. Jalil, and Cindy Warner tonight. For the school presentation night, I'd like to begin by stating again what I said a minute ago about Turner Ashby High School being an amazing school with outstanding students and a tremendous community. To illustrate just a few of these qualities later on, after I speak on these students, we're going to have our TSA students demonstrate and explain some of their most recent accomplishments. But I'd like to start off first with Ava Grace Florrie. I'm about to get to the right page here. Ava Grace Florrie is recognized by the faculty and administration of Turner Ashby High School for demonstrating character in our school that goes far beyond what is expected. For four years of high school, she has set the bar high for herself in leadership, citizenship, and service above self. In two thousand and twenty, when the pandemic broke out, Ava Grace entered a contest through the county schools to design a face mask to represent RCPS. Her design won first place and was distributed to schools throughout Rockham County. The message of her mask is typical of Ava Grace, bringing people together and always looking out for the well-being of others. Her unselfishness, servitude, and leadership have earned her the Character Counts recognition by her teachers and administrators that she so well deserves. Congratulations, Ava Grace. Dr. McQuilkin, come on up. Dr. McQuilkin has something here for you.
Ava Grace, I am excited to be able to present this to you. Do you know what this award is about?
It's really about supporting your whole school community and being a role model for underclassmen as well.
Yes, and it's based upon the pillars of character that our students learn from kindergarten all the way through the twelfth grade. And the six pillars of character are caring, citizenship, fairness, respect, responsibility, and trustworthiness. Would you say you are all of those? I agree.
I would say that as well.
All right, and I always have a quote. Do you have anybody here with you this evening, your parents?
Yes, I have my mom.
I'm Ella.
I also brought my Aunt Doris.
And where's Aunt Doris?
Her dad would have loved to have been here, but he's helping with avian flu in Pennsylvania.
Oh.
Wow.
Is that Doris Harsh?
It is.
Oh, my heavens.
Doris Harsh.
Doris Harsh was my algebra teacher as well, so.
And the school test coordinator. Yay. This evening, Ava Grace, we have probably what everybody wants first is the Klein's Dairy Bar certificate, and a pin, and a certificate to hang in your house somewhere in a very prominent place. Oh, wait a minute, just a second. I always try to have a quote to go along with this, and it says, "What lies behind us and what lies before us are tiny matters compared to what lies within us." Oliver Wendell Holmes.
Thank you.
Next, we have D.R. Jalil. D.R. is recognized by the faculty and staff at Turner Ashby High School for the Character Counts honor. From his work in the classroom to his character and demeanor throughout our school, to his sponsorship of a peer tutoring program during his free time, D.R. is an outstanding representative for Turner Ashby High School. He sets a fine example for his classmates through his hard work and positive attitude. More importantly, he is always ready to help out others in need, whether through his enthusiastic participation in a group project or simply taking the time to explain an assignment to a fellow student. If every student were like D.R., everyone would want to be a teacher. Congratulations, D.R.
Thank you. D.R., you already know it's coming. The Klein's Dairy Bar.
Thank you so much.
And, of course, someplace to hang at your home and a pin. But, D.R., I listened, and you started some things, and I'd like to read a quote that I think probably exemplifies you many times over. It says, "Never underestimate the power of an act of kindness," and there you are.
Thank you so much. Yeah, and today I'm here with my mom, Sabria Jalil. I'm not sure how many of you guys know me, not really sure how many of you guys, what you guys think about me, but if it wasn't for my mother, I wouldn't be the kind-hearted guy that I am today, and I just want to thank my mom for everything that she's done for me.
And now we have Cindy Warner. Mike, you don't want to come up? Reagan, you don't want to come up, Reagan? Come on up here. I never pass up an opportunity to embarrass Reagan in public, so. Cindy Warner is the kind of parent volunteer that is always willing to jump in and help out wherever needed. She is very involved in the athletic program at TA, where she often provides meals for our student athletes, assists in the concession stand, and devotes many hours to helping our athletic department be the best that it can be. And she and her husband, Mike, are pretty good neighbors they have in the neighborhood as well, so I appreciate them in that capacity as well. Cindy is the parent of two TA student athletes. Their son, Cody, played football and baseball here at Turner Ashby High School, and then went on to play baseball at VMI, and I understand is getting married this summer. Reagan is currently a freshman here at Turner Ashby. She plays volleyball and softball, and her softball team is still involved in their action, and we wish them the best of luck in our regional tournament coming up later this week. Cindy is known for being selfless for all the students at TA, and we greatly appreciate her time, commitment, and positive energy within our school. Thank you, Cindy.
Well, the reason Cindy and I know each other so well is because we sat together or close by at the TA football games, and the very first time that I saw Cindy, she was ringing that cowbell. It was going, 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 because Cody was playing, yes. And then you were working for the schools when you were not even in TA. Cody was at VMI, and you were in Pence Middle School, and your mom was still there handing out bulletins or doing something. So, we appreciate. We know. What a great choice. Thank you. Thank you. Klein's Dairy Bar, and you really do need to hang this in your home.
For the school presentation night, I would like to begin by stating again what I said earlier about our TSA students. Jerry Ridgeway and Carrie Gray sponsor the TSA. Jerry Ridgeway has been a solid foundation in Turner Ashby High School for many years. He was my shop teacher in eighth grade at John Whale, and he was actually our third shop teacher of the year. He managed to put up with Eric Baylor and I and a few others along the way and finish out the year. And here he is thirty-some years later, and he's still doing it just as strong as ever. But he is here tonight with his TSA students for our school presentation to talk to you all a little bit about their most recent accomplishments at Technosphere and other TSA activities. So, Mr. Ridgeway? Or?
Thank you, Board, for this opportunity. I want to introduce Will Simmons, who is the president-elect of our chapter. Will will also be serving this year as the Valley Region of Virginia TSA Regional President. We're divided into six regions, and humble brag, Will, when he serves his term as president, it'll be the fifth year in a row that the Valley Region President has been, or is a Turner Ashby student. So, we're really proud of that.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Ridgeway for that introduction, and thank you to the Board for letting me speak today. And TSA has a lot of competitions, like anything from fashion design to extemporaneous speech to flight endurance. And today, some of our competitors have trophies that we got from state conference. So, if you guys want to hold those up for us, wow, look at all those. And that's not even all of them either. There are still a few in the room. So, yeah, they all were able to win, or not win. Not all of them won, but they got second and third. That was still pretty good. But, yeah, they were able to beat some very good schools and very good counties, especially from Northern Virginia, which I think is pretty special that a school of our size was able to beat some of those magnet schools of governor's schools and STEM academies. And it really goes to show that hard work and learning can help you achieve anything, because the hard work and challenges that they faced this year, I know that they'll all do great things later in life, and that they're set, and they got it. So, yeah, I just want to thank the Board one more time. And here you go, Mr. Ridgeway.
So, I want to expand a little bit on what Will said, and before I get to that, I want to thank the parents of all these students who are so supportive and work with us on coming up here to school, to picking them up late and working around our crazy schedule, providing them funds to go to these conferences and things of that nature. Of course, the Board and all the county administrators have to say a big thank you to Eric Fitzgerald, who helps shepherd, as advisors, our paperwork through his office to make sure we have all the Ts crossed and all the Is dotted. In addition to that, if y'all got today's paper, you saw on the front page our participation in the first-ever Shenandoah Valley Electric Vehicle Grand Prix. That's an activity that's been going on for about eight years up in Northern Virginia, and Shenandoah Valley Co-op helped underwrite the cost of those vehicles. They're forty-five hundred dollars apiece, and they helped under- They're forty-five hundred dollars apiece and they helped underwrite the cost of those vehicles. They gave those schools a grant and through Eric's hard work, he was able to help us underwrite the other half of the cost. In the EV Grand Prix, you all helped me out, it was Turner Ashby, Spotswood, Broadway, those three schools from the county participated. It was interesting for me because that stuff, a lot of it was way out of my comfort zone. My team just dove in and dealt with it. We worked around our Technosphere schedule, a lot of work on the car stop while we were getting ready for state competition, which was fine because we came in fifth, which is the best we've done for a while, so I was really thrilled about that. And we were here the night before the race until about 7:30 getting it ready, but we had a great time and we're looking forward to participating again next year. So, you know, thanks to Eric especially for all the work that he does. Just a word about the Technology Student Association and I know a lot of you Board members understand this, but it's not a club in the ordinary sense of the word, it's a co-curricular organization along with, you know, here we have, along with FFA, FCCLA, DECA and FBLA. And what we attempt to do is bring the things the students are learning in the classroom into their competitive events and then also the things they have to learn for competitive events, they can bring back to the classroom. So they're very intertwined and even students that don't pay dues and aren't members of those, we still provide opportunities for them to participate in some of the things that we do do. I got to read the awards at our state conference and I'm glad, I don't want this to sound funny, I'm glad I was sitting down when they announced the school division awards. I knew that Rockingham County had done well, but I want the Board to know at the middle school division, as a school division, we placed third in competitive events. We had two schools from Rockingham County competing, Montevideo Middle and Wilbur Pence Middle. They were competing against schools like Holman Middle from Henrico County that brought sixty kids and eighty parents. And so, you know, to pull that off, in first place was Henrico County and second place was Fairfax. So that just shows the dedication of the teachers as TSA advisors, you know, in this case at Montevideo, we're talking about Brian Basil and of course at Wilbur Pence, we're talking about Jason Hendricks and Justin Hitt. And if those folks would go ahead and stand, chapters two, students two. Thank you. And we have a good time because, and just to let y'all know that we're being really good stewards of county money, Pence and TA ride the same bus and we've been doing that for years, but it's kind of good because I get to see their students, they get to see me and our students, you know, work with them a little bit, mentor them when they have the opportunity. So that was at the middle school level. At the high school level, Rockingham County came in third there as well and the order was reversed. Fairfax County came in first because they have the Thomas Jefferson Center for Science and Technology and then followed by Henrico County. All of those schools and the schools that finished ahead of us, all of them have an enrollment of at least four thousand students. So when I got back, you know, and Eric came down and helped us Saturday, right? Yeah, Friday night and into Saturday and the first thing I did when I got back is I called Eric and I said, "You will not believe this," but I said, "Rockingham was third in both divisions." And I mean, that is such an awesome accomplishment. I told our kids, I said, "Well, we're the number one rural school division by far and away." And we don't, like we do in athletics, we don't divide up divisions, you know, by enrollment. Everybody is competing against everybody else. And so again, that goes to show the dedication of not only the teachers, but the students and the time that they want to put in. And so the schools, the high schools from Rockingham that competed were Turner Ashby, Broadway, Spotswood. And so, you know, we, I know in the Bible it says not to be too prideful, but by golly, we are dag on proud of that. So if those folks, you know, if my kids would stand up again one more time. Thank you. So we do appreciate, we do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to do a little bragging. You know, one of the things I think sometimes as teachers in general that we don't do, although this was never a problem with Eric, is tooting our horn, you know? And we need to follow Eric's example. Now Eric was always really good and he pushes us, he says, "You need to let people know." And this was an incredible state conference for us and we had, Turner Ashby had nineteen students there and we're taking ten to national conference. So thank you for your approval of that trip and we are looking forward to that and hopefully we'll have good things to report when we get back from there. So thank you very much for all that you do for the students in Rockingham County and CTE students in particular.
Thank you. I would like to be aware next year of that EV vehicle race. I'm just a huge race fan. If it's got one wheel on it, we need to race it to see what.
We'll let you know, it was so much fun watching those cars around that track. It's a great opportunity for us to connect with a business like Shenandoah Valley Electric and then for our students to meet some of those folks. One of them is a former student of mine and so, you know, they got to trade stories back and forth and it was just, it was a great day despite the heat. We had a wonderful time.
I'm up for any kind of race. Officer, I'm gonna be driving safely home, but any kind of race, I'm gonna be spending the whole weekend in Charlotte watching racing, so thank you so much for that. Next we will move to the Shenandoah Valley Soil and Water Conservation District Teacher of the Year, Megan Trice. Am I correct on that?
So my name is Megan Trice. I'm the Education Coordinator at the Soil and Water Conservation District. Thank you all for letting me come present this award today for a very deserving teacher. So a little bit about the Soil and Water District, we're a political subdivision of the state. We're charged with implementing conservation programs designed to improve water quality. In addition, we also do a lot of education and outreach. We help classroom teachers, we help with MEWEs, we help with interactive presentations. This is morning, I spent all morning with Mountain View Elementary releasing their trout at their annual trout release that they raise trout and trout in the classroom. We serve Rockingham County, Page County and the city of Harrisonburg and we're supported by state funding, but we rely on locality funding for all of our education support. And annually, we recognize two teachers for our Teacher of the Year Award, one in K through fifth grade and one in sixth through twelfth grade. And these teachers do an outstanding job of not only teaching their curriculum, but incorporating conservation into their education. So our 2022 sixth through twelfth grade Conservation Education Teacher of the Year is Shelley Garrison. Ms. Garrison's been an educator here for nine years and teaches biology and AP Environmental Science at Spotswood High School. She has found many ways to incorporate conservation into her curriculum. She gets her students outdoors to investigate the school campus and explore the natural areas around the school. She exposes her students to environmental problems and challenges and makes them think outside of the box to solve these problems. She works with her students to instruct local elementary school students about water quality and stream health and she teaches her students, teaches the younger students about macroinvertebrates and the importance of protecting our waterways. She works to bring the outdoors into her classrooms so that her students can grow their appreciation of nature and get a better understanding for the need to protect our natural resources. She has worked with outside groups and organizations to provide her students with relevant engaging hands-on activities, some of which are the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, Pure Water Forum, where she's received grants for her resources for her classrooms. She's worked with our office and our partner agency, the Natural Resource Conservation Service, to figure out what invasive species are in the school property and figure out how to clean them up. She goes above and beyond to get her students involved in clubs and other volunteer opportunities outside of school hours. And it's because of all of this dedication that we have selected her to get the 2022 Conservation Teacher of the Year Award. So we brought this awesome plaque for her today and we'll also be recognizing her at a faculty meeting in front of all of her coworkers. So we just appreciate all of your hard work to incorporate all of this into your curriculum.
Thank you so very much. That concludes our recognition and presentation portion of our meeting. We will move to public comments. Again, as always, we would ask that when you come to the podium that you would state your name so that the clerk can record it. The timer will be up on the screen over here at two and a half minutes. I will, thank you all guys, thanks. I will gavel with thirty seconds left and as always, we just ask that the audience be respectful of whomever is speaking. With that being said, and I may have some difficulty with the name, so help me out. We'll begin with Cal Rhodes.
Hi, my name is Calum. I use he/him pronouns and I'm a senior at Broadway High School. I'm here to speak in opposition of the suggested policy to out transgender kids if they're going by a different name. Never was a policy to just let parents in. It's a transphobic policy and I want to share my trans experience. At ten years old, I figured out being a boy felt a lot nicer to me than being a girl. And when I was thirteen, I started going by Calum with certain friends. Sixteen, I started to come out at school. Now I'm seventeen, out to my family, work and school. I have resources that I wish I had when I was fourteen in closeted. I looked for a community with youth experiencing similar things as me and with teachers that understood or at least wanted to understand. If a person doesn't come out to their family, it usually means that the family is doing something to make the person feel invalid or unwanted. We should not force these kids to come out just because of your religious and political beliefs. Last Friday night, I broke down crying to my parents until they knew I was transgender. The seven-year-old weight on my shoulders was finally gone and I felt accepted. Just because I'm a minor doesn't mean I'm automatically confused on who I am. Being a boy has not changed for me for the past seven years. I should be able to decide for myself who I am. I don't want to rely on a person who is not transgender to sit here and tell me I can't be trans because I'm seventeen. I want nothing more than to be myself within your schools, but it's hard when I walk through the halls and get called slurs, when teachers tell me to take harder classes to avoid a transphobic teacher, when I question, will I get a bad grade on this because I'm trans? And when I have to question my own safety in your schools. According to the Trevor Project, 1.8 million young LGBT individuals consider suicide every year. Reported suicide rates were reduced in LGBT individuals, in LGBTU's by thirty-five percent when they had a supportive space such as schools. Supporting the LGBT community is suicide prevention. Suicide prevention can look like telling a transgender kid, "You won't tell their parents they're going by a different name." Members of the school board and staff at our schools preach so hard that they care about all students, but then turn around and discriminate against us. If you cared so much about your students, why didn't you ask the trans community in your county their thoughts before proposing a discriminatory policy against them? I'm not here because this policy made me scared. I did not come out to my parents last Friday night because of the suggested policy. This policy cannot pass for so many reasons, a prime example being Title IX. If somehow this policy or a similar policy passes, we aren't just going to disappear. My community has persevered through everything thrown at us. Being gay, bisexual, lesbian, transgender, anything of the sort is not some woke New Gen Z creation. If you think my gender identity or sexuality is new or rare, maybe realize you're probably talking over us. And I'm here tonight to give the trans community a voice. We've been here for decades, centuries even. We are not going anywhere. I love my trans self and this policy won't stop that. This policy won't make us disappear. It won't make us rethink our genders or our names. It won't make us back down. If anything, it wants us to fight back harder. We will be seen and heard. Thank you.
I'm going to attempt the last name so that I don't, is it Avlon or Arlon? I'm sorry. You can correct me when you come to the podium, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ivor Aslan. My pronouns are he/them and I'm a sophomore at Broadway High and I'm a transgender man. I'm here tonight to talk about the rights and safety of LGBTQUs in schools, but more specifically transgender kids, especially considering recent conversations regarding a policy to notify a parent when a student wants to use a different name. A transgender student may not come out to their family for many reasons. Perhaps their parents are against it, maybe they'll be kicked out or just in general danger. So they may confide in a teacher who they trust will accept them and validate them unconditionally regardless of who they are or where they come from. We deserve to have a loving and welcoming space. We deserve to be protected and we deserve to feel safe. This is absolutely not about the rights of parents and this policy is a prime example of transphobia. We have the right to have a say in who we are and who knows. We know ourselves and what's best for us better than anyone else does. For students to have a safe space to express themselves and to be who they are is lifesaving. According to the Trevor Project, forty-five percent of LGBTQU's have considered suicide in the past year and fourteen percent have attempted. Less than one in three transgender youth have had an affirming and safe household. That could be any person attending any school in this county or in the state. These are not just numbers, these are real people, real teenagers just like me and even your own kids. For schools to be a safe space is extremely important. We hear all this talk about wanting to create a safe space for transgender youth in schools, so we must make that happen and we must let that happen. Educate teachers and staff and let students know that they are safe and actually mean it. We should not have to carry this burden worrying about whether or not we will be welcome here anymore. We should not have to feel sick with fear of coming to school every single day simply because of who we are. We are not here to be punished or spoken over because of who we are. We're here to learn and express ourselves and we are here simply assisting. This policy will not get rid of us. When I came out to my teachers and I heard them call me Ivor, I felt validated and I felt supported and I felt loved. Every day slowly got easier and easier. I used to isolate myself and barely talk to anyone because I was so scared of who I was and who would find out. Now I'm the happiest and most content with myself that I've ever been and I want other people older and younger than me to be able to feel the same way. I built incredible friendships and bonds I never would have if I was forced back in the closet merely because of the hatred brought by those around me. Although I'm of those who are fortunate enough to have a loving and supportive family, I will not stop fighting for those who do not get to come home to their family with open arms. I will not stop fighting for those who need to hide and I will never stop fighting for those who couldn't fight any longer. Thank you for your time.
Again, my apologies, last name is Shipe.
Hi, good evening. I'm Amara Shipe. I'm a transgender woman at Broadway High School and I use she/her pronouns. I am also here in opposition to the policy that would out transgender students. Myself and other students would lose the safe space that we've built at school. We entrust teachers and counselors and other staff members with our names, our pronouns, our identities because we feel safe and validated and we can just express ourselves around them. Some of us just don't feel safe at home because our parents don't value who we are truly. So we just have to hide countless days. I know that from experience. My parents, just, they don't look at me the same way anymore now that they know. I don't want that for other students and if they decide to tell their parents, that is their opinion and that is their choice. But if they also don't tell their parents, that is still their choice and that needs to be respected. Transgender students are still people and our safety should take priority over everything else. And if we do not want our parents to know, they do not have to know. Please, I beg you to ask, ah, sorry. I ask you to respect our safety. Thank you.
Zoe Mongold?
Hello, my name is Zoe Mongold and I graduated from Broadway High School two years ago. It's recently come to my attention that the amount of sexual violence in the schools is at an all-time high. Yesterday, the community came together to share their experiences with sexual assault. None of the stories ended with the school principals or the school board doing their jobs. I was under the impression that when sexual violence occurred in the schools, that the school was obligated to report, but after all the stories I heard yesterday, I don't find this to be the truth. If you've been a victim or know of someone who has been a victim of sexual violence in Rockingham County schools, I ask that you please raise your hand. If you reported the sexual violence to the school authorities and they did nothing, please keep your hand up. I now ask the school board to take a look around at everyone. These are the people of the very community you work for that have been let down because the schools aren't doing their jobs. Students at the schools are being touched inappropriately, catcalled, harassed and even raped and when they tell the appropriate authorities, they are hearing things like, "Well, maybe watch what you wear, what you do and people won't say these things." Or "Try not to draw too much attention to yourself." They're probably doing it because they like you, just don't make a big deal out of it. I think we should make a big deal out of it because teachers and administration are just allowing these things to happen. Almost fifteen thousand, almost- Almost fifteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand students experience sexual violence at schools every year. Since 2015, there have been students, experience, oh, since 2015, there have been four big sexual violence cases just here at Turner Ashby. 2015, a teacher and a sixteen-year-old child exchanged nude photos of themselves. 2017, a football coach sexually assaulted two female students. 2018, a female teacher assaulted a male student. 2019, a teacher groomed, sexually assaulted, and raped a student. In this case, the staff here at Turner Ashby knew what was occurring and told the two to knock it off. If you think these are the only times that sexual violence has occurred in the schools, you are mistaken. As a school board member, we choose to put you in the seat to protect the students of the schools and you clearly are not. If you cannot work together with this community to fight against sexual violence in the schools, we will gladly find someone else to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I think we need to stop playing conservative-issue bingo. Let's keep the focus on the kids. I'm here to support Amara, Ivor, and Cal and those like them. I would just like to applaud their courage, their moral courage to stand up today. Character counts. They clearly showed that today and I don't think I need to say anything else that they haven't said already. They were very articulate in their words and they spoke, but I cannot expound on that at all. I will say plain and simple, if this policy is implemented, it will be a violation of Title IX.
My name is Ashley Saunders. I have two children in the Broadway school system. My son graduated from Broadway High School and was openly trans while attending. I am also a children's minister in Harrisonburg. And usually I have something incredibly nice and uplifting to say because I believe wholeheartedly in peacemaking. But I would be lying if I said anything peaceful this evening. I am exhausted. The parents of LGBTQ children in Harrisonburg and Rockingham County public schools are exhausted. We fear for our children's safety within the school system. We fear for all children who are queer, who are being attacked as a political talking point by a member of our board. Outing a trans child to their parents has nothing to do with parental rights. It is about scaring them back into gender conformity. By outing students, by contacting parents of social name and gender change, you are actively putting children in harm's way. And for what? No child's life is worth any amount of political grandstanding. Studies have found using a trans or non-binary person's chosen name and identified pronoun can improve their mental health, significantly reduce overall negative health outcomes. Plus, doing so helps boost a child's self-confidence, promotes safer communities for all gender non-conforming youth, which creates safer communities for all youth. But this information falls on deaf ears of a member of our school board who has told me to my face they do not want this information. To the queer and trans parents and the students of Rockingham County Public Schools, I am tired, but I am not going anywhere. Our numbers are growing and our patience is thin. Tomorrow, when I wake up and continue to do this work, I will know that I am fighting for the well-being of all children in Rockingham County Public Schools. I want to see them get an emotionally safe and developmentally appropriate education. But there is one on our school board I know for a fact cannot do the same.
Ashley, one parent to another, that is a powerful example of advocating for your kids and for all of our kids. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Scheichel and neighbors. My name is Kirsten Beechy. My children go to Mountain View Elementary. One of my twins is an awesome reader and the other one is a great dancer. The dancer has Down Syndrome. We have been grateful for books that celebrate and represent her experiences. Earlier this year, kindergarten and first-grade teachers invited the twins to come to their classrooms and read the story, just to ask, to their students, helping everyone to learn a little more about themselves and their classmates living with allergies, ADHD, autism, diabetes, Down Syndrome, and other conditions. And another day after school, our librarian gave me a new book about Sofia Sanchez, a little girl with Down Syndrome who works as a model for several major clothing outlets. Here, I'll pass them down while I talk. Sharing books together helps our children become kinder as they understand more about each other and more curious as they learn to ask about new things instead of avoiding them or fearing them. It means so much to all of us as parents to see our children's and teens' experiences represented in the curriculum. All of us, from various cultural and religious backgrounds, various experiences of race and class, various expressions of gender, and diverse family structures. I'm here tonight to thank teachers and librarians in RCPS who are making diverse stories part of our kids' education. Please don't let the fuss over critical race theory or anxiety around changing gender norms cause us to self-censor representative bookshelves and curriculum. Let's keep our focus on equipping and supporting teachers to foster a sense of belonging and civic responsibility in every student. Anxieties about the names that our trans teens are called by their own choice, by teachers they trust, are misplaced. Worry instead about the names that our kids call each other. Worry about sexual assault in our schools. Worry that an eighteen-year-old massacred folks, strangers, in a supermarket last week just because they were black. Kindness and curiosity and civic responsibility aren't just the pretty words to put up on the walls of the school, but they are literally what save us from each other. And so, books, I think, are a little piece of that. My time's up. Thank you.
My name's Todd Matthew and I'm a teacher at Rockingham County Schools. And I'm concerned about the lack of a policy at RCPS to notify parents if their child begins identifying as a different gender at school. Our schools notify parents about a myriad of, our students notify parents in obtaining their permission for a myriad of things. To name just a few, we obtain a parent's permission for their child to ride on a school bus, go on a field trip to a park, or take an aspirin. We notify parents about their child's behavior, academic progress, or if something out of the ordinary happens at school. I assert that many of these things requiring permission or notification pale in comparison to a child identifying as a different gender. I hope you can appreciate that many parents believe that this situation is very different from Daniel being asked to call, being asked, asking to be called Danny. It's an indication that something substantial is happening at an emotional, social, and psychological level. To keep parents in the dark about this would be akin to school personnel failing to identify parents if they became aware that their child was struggling with something like anorexia or depression. Informing parents is not discriminatory. Parents have a right to know about the well-being of their children. Dr. Scheichel, I appreciate your valid concerns about discriminating against certain groups of students and I would like to propose a solution. Have all parents sign a form at the beginning of the year indicating if they want to be notified if their child requests to be called by a name other than their given name, a variation of their given name, or their middle name. This would give all parents the ability to indicate their preference without discrimination against any group. Before Mr. Cross spoke up recently, most parents had no idea that this is going on. If Rockingham County Schools is going to keep name changes quiet, parents need to be made aware of this. Parents want to know what their children are being taught and what's going on in their schools. Enact policies that keep parents in the loop and promote open and honest communication. That's it. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment section of our meeting tonight. We will move next to board member highlights and I will begin with Mr. Falk.
I'd just like to say that this evening has been a highlight. We got to watch as three years' worth of retirees were honored for their service to Rockingham County Public Schools and the community. We've got to hear from our community members about issues that are important to them and also hear about the wonderful things that are being done here at Turner Ashby and in our schools. So this evening has been a great highlight for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dr. McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. I'd like to begin by thanking Mr. Judd and his team for hosting us this evening. You hosted not only the dinner, but the meeting. It's been a busy night for you and we thank you very much. I would like to second Mr. Falk's words. It was nice to meet in person. After three years, we're all together again and it was, it was wonderful to be with everybody together. I have several highlights that I will be as brief as I possibly can. The musicals this year, the High School and Middle musicals have concluded and they were all wonderful. The FFA had banquets and still are, and there are banquets to come, so thank you, FFA, for inviting us. Rockingham Educational Foundation, RIFI, held two events honoring the Teachers of the Year and also the students receiving scholarships. And as far as sports events were concerned, I know they're ongoing and we heard Mr. Judd say that he has some sports teams still participating. And I know other high schools do as well. But one week ago from today, the United Basketball was held right here in this audit, in this gym at Turner Ashby and it was a wonderful evening. So we were glad to have United Basketball back, unified, excuse me, Unified Basketball. MTC celebrated their fiftieth anniversary of existence and highlighted those accomplishments at a community breakfast. The Rockingham Farm Bureau Women's Committee held their annual legislative dinner. And in conclusion, there were many project presentations at the governor's schools with the students, one of which was the electric vehicle competition. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McQuillan, Ms. Lauer.
Thank you. So it's a little bit of brag time, sorry, but I have had the best two weeks. I know there's been a lot of stuff going on in the community that it's easy to get wrapped up in, but let me tell you about the blessings I have had. Started with, I've got to put on my glasses because I'm not blessed with eyesight anymore. Started with the FFA banquet, no, it started with musical. I went to the Elkton Middle School Musical. It was amazing. If you didn't get out to see a musical this year, definitely put it on your list because the arts program in Rockingham County Schools is strong and the kids are so very talented. You would definitely enjoy the performances. And then I went, the next night, I was able to go to Broadway High School's FFA banquet and see the accomplishments of those students and it was wonderful and it was so amazing because my kids go there, so I've been going to these banquets for a while. And it was so amazing to see kids in the eighth grade stumble through scripts and be real nervous on stage. And then as juniors get up and speak eloquently and just do an amazing job. It's so great to see the growth of the students in Rockingham County. And then I was able to go to, back to J., I was able to go to J. Frank Hilliard the next week. They were doing a class on shearing sheep, so I was able to help a class shear some sheep. Kids that had never worked with sheep before had the opportunity thanks to the ag department there and that was a lot of fun. And then we had, like Dr. McQuillan said, we had the MTC banquet, or breakfast, celebrating the massive accomplishments of our students at MTC. We had just oodles of students that had competed statewide and brought home awards. And I think somebody said, Earl, oh, the TSA guy, he said, "We didn't all win, but you did." You know, if you get up there and you partake in these events, no matter where you place, you won. So I'm just so proud of those students. And then I had to slip out of the MTC breakfast early and rush home because I had a class of special ed students come and tour the farm and pet the sheep and play in the tractors and it was so heartwarming to see the great big smiles on those students' faces and help them just learn just a little bit and have a fun day. So that was awesome. And then we had the J. Frank Hilliard banquet where I got to see a new crop of kids, so many kids now participating in FFA, so many of our kids in Rockingham County Schools getting involved and finding their passions. It's so heartwarming. And then tonight, to finish it up with the reception for our retirees and to see teachers who have spent their lives dedicated to Rockingham County Public Schools and making these kids so awesome. It's been a great week and I'm looking forward to another great week. So go out there, enjoy the community, find the beauty around you because, man, we've got a lot of it in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Mr. Cross.
I would agree with that. Growing up here as a kid, I didn't love the, I always wanted to move to Amsterdam and do things I shouldn't do, but this, this place is such a beautiful place to live at. And the older I get, the more I fall in love with the Chandel Valley and where we live. So it's got to love this time of year and the smells it gives you, but I love where we live. First of all, I want to thank everyone that came out here tonight, for parents that came out and spoke. Thank you for the students who got up and spoke tonight, took a lot of bravery of you to come up here and speak before the public and I just want to say thank you for being brave and coming out and speaking tonight. And to the employees that come out tonight and for those who are brave enough to speak as well, thank you so much for your bravery, coming and expressing your thoughts and feelings as we take that all in. I want to thank also, or congratulate, Chris Knoll for taking over here at Turner Ashby High School. And Chris, I know you're going to do a great job here at TA and it's going to be a good experience for you, a good experience for the community, and a good experience for these kids coming to school here. So Chris, I know you're going to do a great job in that. I also want to tell Mindy Schiffler tonight, you look great. And my thoughts and my prayers go out to you as well and to your family and I'm praying for you. You look great tonight. And I'm, and to say to Phil Judd that's leaving here, thank you so much. I don't know where Phil went, but thanks, Phil, for all your many years of dedication here at Turner Ashby High School, all the sweat and blood you put in for, to this school and doing your best job that you could do here. I really appreciate you. I've got an opportunity to work with you for a couple of years here at TA and it was an honor to work with you and we're going to miss you. The community here in TA is, is going to miss you as well. But congratulations, Chris, again, for all you've, for your getting you to that position and yeah, I know TA is in good hands with Mr. Knoll coming out here and thank you, Mr. Judd, for all you've done. Last tonight, I want to thank, I say congratulations to Marcus Davis, the head baseball coach at Spotswood High School. They set a, not only did they win districts this year, but they set a school record for the most wins in the regular season. And what a great accomplishment that was. I had the opportunity to watch a lot of those games because my son plays on that team, so I am biased. Congratulations to all the other district winners at Spotswood. Congratulations to Dr. Scheichel and his, his team for winning the girls soccer team out at Spotswood High School as well for winning, for winning districts. The girl, or the tennis team, I don't know if it's girls or boys, but I know that they won districts and then there was another district at Spotswood as well, I believe. But anyway, Spotswood had a great year and it's been a great year to watch. But anyway, Spotswood had a great year, and it's been a great year to watch what Marcus Davis and his coaching staff out there has done. They went 19-1 for the regular season, and they beat a record this year for the most wins in a row that had been set, I think, back in the day when Dale Curry was around here in Rockham County. So it's been a long time. So congratulations, Marcus, and to your coaching staff. Look forward to seeing you win a state title, and to Oscar for you winning a state title as well, bring the gold home here at Rockham County. So with that said, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Dr. Scheichel?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cross, for that. Always happy to have the girls celebrated for their accomplishments. Dr. McQuillken and Ms. Lauer had already covered a lot of the events that we had attended. Many of those were true highlights, scholarship banquet, absolutely unified basketball every year, so glad we could have it again. We had it a little bit as a jamboree in one evening rather than in, you know, an extended period where we played every week for a few weeks. We had really good conversations with our delegates and senators from the General Assembly at the Farm Bureau Legislative Dinner. Hopefully, they'll bring a budget to the Governor soon so that we know what our budget actually is for next year. And then the Community Leaders Breakfast for MTC. That's, again, always a highlight. If you're lucky enough, they, on June 3rd, they have a concert that sold out within minutes, but on StubHub, you may still get some tickets. I hear it's going to be a great event. They booked this group before they actually won The Voice and then became famous. The band is named, Girl Named Tom, and there might still be some tickets available. And then also, I want to say thanks to Ms. Beachy for bringing the books up here. It's great to see when a book like Just Ask is being handed around, and when you look at the author of that book, it's Sonia Sotomayor, who is a Supreme Court Justice. So, you know, that's fascinating to see that those kinds of books are written by people in those positions, and her experiences as well. And Governor's School recognitions, we went to Mountain View High School and got to celebrate graduates from the Governor's School. That's also always a highlight, the students who take advanced classes at that school and then move on to great things, to see the number of top-level schools that our students from Rockingham County attend as a result of the education here and at the Governor's School. So those are my highlights. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. One of the benefits of going last as chair is I don't have to remember all these great highlights. I can just let my colleagues go through them, and then I don't have to try to remember them. But thank you all. So I'm going to use my time tonight to share with you a favorite quote of mine that I often turn to when I'm watching the news and feeling a little depressed about the way things are going. And if you will allow me, I'm going to take some liberty with it and make it more pertaining to our county here. And the quote says, in essence, "What we need in Rockingham County is not division. What we need in Rockingham County is not hatred. What we need in Rockingham County is not violence or lawlessness, but love and wisdom and compassion toward one another and a feeling of justice towards those who still suffer within our county, wherever they may be or wherever they may come from." So I ask you tonight, when you return home, to say a prayer for our own county, which all of us love, a prayer for understanding and that compassion of which I spoke. We can do well in this county. We will have difficult times. We've had difficult times in the past. We will have difficult times in the future. It is not the end of violence. It is not the end of lawlessness. It is not the end of disorder. But the vast majority of people in this county want to live together, want to improve the quality of our life, and want justice for all human beings who abide in this county. Let us dedicate ourselves to what the Greeks wrote so many years ago, to tame the savageness of man and make gentle the life of this world. Let us dedicate ourselves to that and say a prayer for our county and for its people. Next, we will move into action items. We do have reason to need to approve the minutes from our last meeting. I will entertain a motion for that approval if it be the board's desire.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any comments or questions concerning the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is five oh. Field trips, Dr. Scheichel?
I have a number of field trips for your approval tonight from Broadway High School, marching band summer symposium, July 10 through the 14th, 2022, one to four students to Western Carolina University in Cullowhee, North Carolina. TSA National Conference, June 26 through July 1, three students to Grapevine, Texas. And that's really in combination with Turner Ashby High School TSA National Conference, June 26 through July 1, 10 students to Grapevine, Texas. And then finally, Montevideo Middle School FFA, June 27 through 30, six students to Virginia Tech in Blacksburg, Virginia, and I recommend approval of those field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion in support?
I'd like to make a motion to follow superintendent's recommendation to approve the field trips as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is five oh. Appointment of clerk, Dr. Scheichel?
I recommend to appoint Kaitlin Gilkison as clerk of the school board beginning July 1, 2022, through the end of the 2022 calendar year. Ms. Gilkison is over here working with Pam Bocock, who tried to talk out of this for a year now, but she was part of the retiree reception earlier. As you know, she is retiring this summer. So again, thank you for everything, Pam. Welcome to my office, Kaitlin, and I do recommend Kaitlin Gilkison as clerk of the board, again, beginning July 1 and serving through the rest of the calendar year, at which time you will appoint again when the new calendar year begins.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. I will make a motion to accept that recommendation. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any discussion? I just don't want to get through this meeting without expressing my extreme gratitude to Pam. There are two people over the past 20 years who have kept me going where I need to be and when I need to be there. One is my wife, the other is Pam Bocock, as she will send me emails and reminders. And your support throughout this, Pam, has been tremendous, and your friendship is invaluable. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Pam, for all you've done and for helping me out as I come on as a new school board member and helping keep me straight to know what I needed to do and get done when I first came on, it was quite a bit of stuff. So I really appreciate your help in the whole process, and I wish you the best in your retirement, and may God bless you in everything that you do.
And buckle up, Kaitlin.
Welcome, Kaitlin.
They say it takes three school board members to do, conduct business with school board. I think we could get a unanimous decision to cancel Pam's retirement. However, yeah, I don't think we could get Pam on board with that. Pam, you have been just a pleasure to work with and, yeah, keeping us all on track. It's quite a, and Oscar, she keeps Oscar on track, too. So thank you for your service. You will be missed, but welcome. You've got big shoes to fill, but I have no doubt and look forward to working with you, but I have no doubt that you'll do an excellent job and look forward to working with you.
Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five oh. Thank you, and congratulations, Kaitlin, I think. MTC surplus property for auction, Dr. Scheichel?
Board members, you have a list of surplus items from MassNet and Technical Center in your materials, and I recommend to approve the MTC list of surplus property for auction on June 4, 2022, as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion in support?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the MTC list of surplus property for auction on June 4.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is five oh. Thank you. World Geography Textbook Adoption Committee, Dr. Shifflin?
Chair Breeden, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichel, this is a request to approve a textbook adoption committee for world geography. As a ninth-grade SOL course, world geography has become the primary path for students to earn the social studies verified credit required for high school graduation. In light of this requirement, the social studies supervisor, Bo Dickinson, and secondary curriculum leaders agree that it should be prioritized for an updated text that supports the Virginia SOL curriculum. This committee will be comprised of teachers, parents, and students who have confirmed a willingness to review textbook samples, complete an online evaluation form, and meet to discuss a recommendation for purchase. The two textbooks being considered are the ones on the state-approved list, World Cultures and Geography Survey by National Geographic and Cengage Learning, and Geography, The Human and Physical World by McGraw-Hill.
Thank you, Dr. Shifflin.
I recommend approval of the World Geography Textbook Adoption Committee as presented by Dr. Shifflin.
Thank you to both of you. Is there a motion in support?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the World Geography Textbook Adoption Committee.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillken. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions?
Is, so this, is this adopting the books? You've already had the committee, and we're going to adopt this? Is this the committee that's going to review?
Yes, this is the committee. We're looking for the board to approve the committee that will make a recommendation. So we'll come back here maybe in a month or so and say, of these two, here's the one that the committee recommends. Okay, but this is the first step. Yes, good question.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the superintendent's recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five oh. Thank you, Dr. Shifflin.
All right, thank you.
Moving into information items, at our last meeting, Mr. Cross has to be placed, have a place on the agenda to talk about a potential policy change, and I will call on Mr. Cross if you have anything to add tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. I may hand these out. At the last school board meeting, I was shocked that we didn't have a policy. So we really don't have a policy. We're kind of going by the recommendations of the video. We way out in the standard. And I was just really shocked on the fact that a child can go to school and they can be called by whatever name they want to, and the parents have no say or are not even notified on that. I don't care if Billy wants to be called Sally. That's okay. I have no business in that. I don't care what your sexuality is or what sex you prefer. That has nothing to do with that. It has everything about parent notification and parents being notified and also parents saying, hey, I consent to my child being called this certain name at school. It has everything to do with parents. And so I think it was Ms. Lauer that asked at the last school board meeting, where do we draw the line? And I rightfully said, parents is where we draw the line. And parents need to be involved, they need to be made aware, and they need to consent of having teachers, administrators, counselors, all of that, everyone at school to call their child by another name that they did not give them at birth. And so if a parent wants to do that, that's 100% their right to do that, but parents should be involved. And I think as a school board, we should support parents' rights on this school board. The majority of our community stands behind what I said here tonight, and we need to support our parents. So I wrote a policy. What's your sign say? Okay. I want to, I want to read the policy that I wrote tonight. And the way I understand it is, Mr. Breeden, is that we won't vote on this tonight, but it'll be something that we'll talk about and we'll discuss, and that the next school board meeting, we'll take that.
Yeah, the process will be that what is presented here tonight will be sent for division review and legal review if need be, and then we will bring it back if there are any changes that are made for discussion and then vote. So it's not, it may be two meetings out or so before a vote could take place.
It's on the table for us to talk about, and it's a concern for parents as well. And, you know, this idea that parents are going to abuse, the majority of parents are going to abuse their children or not accept them, that's the biggest lie that I've ever heard. My, there's a difference between affirming a child and loving a child. And my children do things all the time that I don't affirm, but I still love them. I'd give my life for them. And that's what we're talking about tonight, is parents being, having the right to know what's going on inside their child's life. I think the statistics for transgender kids that came up and spoke tonight, I think the statistic is somewhere between 80 or 90% of those who suffer with gender dysphoria will grow out of that when they get into their 20s. And so, yeah, okay. And, and...
I'm sorry, but we are out of the public comment section of the meeting, and this is now into the board section discussion. So thank you.
Thank you. So this has everything to do with parents being in the know of their children and what's going on with them, so they can love them, so they can know what's going on in their lives. And that's what I want as parents in our community. We want to know what everything is going on. So I want to read this tonight. Parental consent slash knowledge of students' name change. Rockham County School Board recognizes the sacred responsibility of a parent or guardian's decision in naming their child from birth, and will uphold the parent's or guardian's decision regarding the name which the school addresses the child while in the school's custody. A parent or guardian has a fundamental right to direct the care, custody, and control of their children. A parent or guardian is recognized as having the primary responsibility for the upbringing of their child and is recognized as the highest authority in a child's upbringing, not the school, I may add. Therefore, a parent or guardian has a fundamental right to have knowledge and be in full agreement of any name change other than that which is presented in the child's official school records. All employees or agents of Rockham County Public Schools will address a student by the name or names listed only in the student's power school records. If any student wishes to be called by any other name that does not reflect the student's official school records, a parent or guardian shall be notified by the school administrator, and consent must be given of any such name change. If any employee or agent of the Rockham County Public Schools who knowingly disregards parental knowledge or consent in regards of a student's name change, the superintendent and the school board will take appropriate personnel action up to and including dismissal of any employee found in violation of this provision. Such actions of the superintendent and school board shall begin immediately on notification of violation. And this is a policy that I present to you tonight, school board, on parental consent and knowledge of students' name change.
Since this will go to, for division review... Since this will go to, for division review, I think there will be an opportunity, perhaps if there are questions to ask as we go along through this process. Just as a matter of clarification, Mr. Cross, we would, in, in this policy, we would be talking about even a student who's named Robert who wants to be called Bob?
Yeah, I think that the parent tonight had a, was it, it was a parent, actually the employee that spoke tonight, go back to my notes, but it's a simple fix. At the beginning of the school year, when you register your child for school, if whatever names that you want your child to go by, that can be added into Power School at that time. So it's, it's not something that's, that's hard to do. We get notifications if the kid wants to ride the school bus home. If a kid, my son, I got called plenty of times when he didn't wear his mask properly during COVID season. So there's many things that, that the school calls home and asks the parents. In the process of the school year, if school has began, it would be something that, that the child would go and the counselor, come to the counselor or their teacher, they would go and talk to the administrator. The administrator would call home and talk with the parents or have a meeting, and then the, then the parents would consent or not to the name change being added to Power School. So it's an, it's an easy, easy fix.
Okay. All right, we will move to, Dr. Schickel, Governor Youngkin's education report and priorities.
Yeah, on the previous items. So do you want me to reach out to Mr. Cross? I have a number of questions in terms of the logistics of this policy. Do you want me to meet with Mr. Cross on that separately during division review?
Yeah, I think that's fine, and then perhaps you can report individually to us.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks. Or Mr. Cross can, whichever.
Chairman Breeden, members of the board, and public, last week, Governor Youngkin received a 90-day report from the state superintendent. He had originally requested a 30-day report on the state of education, followed by a 90-day report. So the first 30-day report came out two months ago, and then late last week, Governor Youngkin held a press conference that included the, the people who spoke were the Secretary of Education, the state superintendent, the chief equity, sorry, the chief diversity, opportunity, and inclusion officer, Dr. Rosa Atkins, who previously served as the superintendent in Charlottesville, and then Governor Youngkin spoke. And so they covered a, a number of different topics, and the report itself is available on the DOE website. It's 30 some pages long, so I'm not going to go into all that detail, but I'll try to cover basically the basics of the seven principles that underlie Governor Youngkin's education plan, and also just give a little bit of an idea of, of what we're talking about in terms of how that may affect Rockham County Public Schools. There's no implementation plan yet, and we don't have timelines, but it's important just to understand initially, you know, what we may hear more about. And so this is the image from the actual plan. So there are seven principles that Governor Youngkin outlined, high expectations, empowering parents and teachers, zero tolerance for discrimination, innovation, transparency, and accountability, post-secondary readiness, and freedom of speech and inquiry. So I'll just briefly touch on each of those. When it comes to high expectations, both the state superintendent and Governor Youngkin talked about this gap. So there are our standards of learning in Virginia, and they're measured, you know, through SOL testing, and then there are proficiency cut scores. So when you look at these three years that they, you know, pointed out in the report, this is for grade four reading, 43%, 77% of students showed a proficient level in 2015, 79% in 2017, and 75% in 2019, according to the Virginia standards of learning. Now, there's also a national exam. It's called the NAEP, National Assessment of Educational Progress. And so that allows the federal government or anyone really to compare states across the board. So, you know, if Virginia has its SOLs, and then Tennessee has a different set of standards, it's hard to compare proficiency levels. And so NAEP serves as part of that. And so the NAEP standards are different, and so according to their standards, those numbers aren't in the 70% range, in the 40% range. So when it comes to proficient, 43%, 43%, and 38%. And so it's important to understand that that gap is there, and it's one of the ways you can compare achievement by states. Now, Virginia generally ranks pretty high on national assessment, so this doesn't mean that, you know, Virginia is at the bottom of the, of the table. In fact, in, in many of these assessments, Virginia is in the top 10, and many even in the top five. But those are simply different assessments, and we have to take it seriously, right, that there is a national assessment that has a significantly higher standard when it comes to proficiency. But all states are struggling with that. And so again, it's simply a matter of comparing Virginia to other states. What I found interesting is that the governor, at length, talked about what he wants to see Virginia adopt. So Virginia, just recently, the General Assembly passed the Virginia Literacy Act. The governor signed it. And basically, the statement from the report is, we will ensure that evidence-based literacy instruction is prioritized across Virginia schools through faithful implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act of 2022, which requires alignment with the science of reading in all instruction. And that's the goal. There will be funds available for coaches. There will be funds available for professional development. Well, this is exactly what RCPS implemented a year ago. So letters, our letters project is exactly the science of reading. And I will say, there's full agreement that when we want to raise the levels of reading proficiency in Virginia, that this is exactly the right direction to go. And so as I listened to the presentation, I was like, that's great. Even spoke to some of our legislators and said, you know, if the governor wants to see what an implementation looks like, where we don't just worry about a two-year training process, but what happens to the teacher who is a first-year teacher when our teachers are going through year two? What happens the following year when our teachers are, you know, that started now, are completed that training? And then what happens in future years? There will always be first-year teachers, second-year teachers. What happens at the college level? And so we have a plan in place to continue that professional development for every first-year and second-year teacher, and then also, you know, push it up to the higher grade levels. But that's exactly based on a pilot project that John Whalen, two years ago, during the pandemic, we, this was one of the most difficult decisions we made, to say, literacy can't wait. We need to implement this division-wide, and our elementary teachers have done all the heavy lifting. And there is story after story from teachers and from parents who will say, this has been life-altering for kids. So the governor is right on the mark with his focus on the science of reading, and we are already on the way. And so we will start year two of that implementation next year. There are similar, you know, pieces about math instruction, and again, when it comes to the focus that the governor expressed in terms of rigors, data analysis, and best practice evaluation, that this is why we partner with Harvard Proving Ground, not for a curriculum, but what Harvard brings to the table, is some of the most rigorous process for evaluating data and evaluating strategies that you can find. And so that's why we went in that direction, to make sure that we have the best people in the field at the table. Parent and teacher empowerment. So Governor Youngkin talked, you know, this is again from the report, we, we commit to providing honest, timely, accurate, and actionable information. Parents, educators, and learners will know where every student is succeeding and where they are off track. They will be supported and acting upon disinformation, providing interventions to put learners back on track for short and long-term success. And so what Governor Youngkin talked about there is if students are behind grade level in reading, that there will be specific reports available to parents. He said that, you know, the Department of Education over the last years, you know, the data that we've received isn't always really easily actionable. What do you do now? So now you find out what your kid's reading score is, but now what? And so again, Governor Youngkin promised some resources to help parents. You know, when we talk about a child being behind in reading, what can parents do at home, and what direction does that take? So it's important to have that information and to partner with parents. And I think that's really important to understand in all the areas, you know. Our schools partner with parents all the time, and it's important that, you know, our school counselors, they're engaged with parents all the time, teachers are, and have the appropriate conversations about their children's learning experiences. Zero tolerance for discrimination. So both Rosa Atkins and the governor talked about this. We have to realize that there are, when we talk about Virginia being at the top of the national scale in some of these assessments, that we still have to realize that the picture is not the same for all groups. And so Governor Youngkin said, all students deserve an education that does not teach nor practice discrimination, whether it be through the funding their schools receive, the opportunities they have to learn, or preconceived judgments. And they used this particular chart to make that point, that when we look at NAEP's, NAEP scores, for example, that when you look at all students, 38% of Virginia students showed proficiency in grade four reading, but when you disaggregate that, 63% of Asian students, 46% of white students, 19% of black students, and 26% of Hispanic students. And the Secretary of Education, the state superintendent, made a statement that you could have come straight from Dr. Shiflett's presentations in the past. In a statewide call with superintendent, she said, ZIP code, family income, race, gender, ethnicity, these shouldn't be the predictors of success. When we see these discrepancies, then we need to provide resources. It is to create fair opportunities. That's what we're talking about. And so we have to realize where those discrepancies are, and that a demographic factor shouldn't be the predictor. It's not about equal outcomes for every child. We know students don't all progress equally and have the same outcomes. It's not desirable anyway. We don't want everyone, for example, to go to a four-year college. That's not useful for society. We need to ensure that all students can follow the path that they desire, but it shouldn't be those demographic factors that should determine it. And so Governor Youngkin did talk about that as well. When it comes to innovation, you know, he said that we need to look at schools that have tried different things. We need to look at lab schools. We need to look at magnet schools, charter schools. The Department of Strategic Innovation will catalog innovative education opportunities in schools, including lab governors, magnet, and charter schools. Now, I will say this, if you want to know how Rockham County schools stack up against some of these magnet schools, yeah, you heard the TSA kids earlier, right? So they don't, they don't worry about being in the same competition with TJ, so the Thomas Jefferson School. And they do quite well in those environments. And also then the seven, eight best practices. The department aims to inspire and incubate innovation across school divisions and the Commonwealth. And actually, one of the applications for a lab school that was received by the governor's team was one that involves RCPS. Again, we've said this shouldn't be locally funded. If the state wants to see these lab schools, you know, make it happen financially. And so that's what we're talking about with JMU still. The, this isn't for another year that that would start, but it is those innovation projects where we have local universities. And that's, that legislation, we don't quite know yet whether it made it into the budget, but again, we're at the table with the governor's team and also with VDOE to look at whether we can have small environments where we can try things differently and, and make things happen differently. But certainly lots of work in that area. Transparency and accountability. So again, the same conversation about NAEP scores, about SOL scores. There was also a conversation about how many students get college credit through AP scores, that that's dropped in Virginia a little bit. That can be for a number of reasons. So for example, in Rockham County, we've emphasized dual enrollment classes more for getting college credit rather than just the, because it's so content-heavy and varies, it, there's no application level to AP tests. And so that is part of the reason why if fewer kids take AP classes, but instead take dual enrollment classes at the college level, they also get that college credit. And so sometimes we have to be careful with the data, but we need to be having these conversations, right? What are these, what does the information show, and where can we get better? Because one thing's for sure, there's a lot of room for improvement in all school divisions across the country, but certainly in Virginia and in Rockingham County, we can improve in, in many areas. Accreditation standards may be revised. Now, one of the concerns always is that standard, standards of learning testing, so the SOL testing becomes again this only measure. And I don't think that's the direction that the governor's team is going. There are a number of team members on his team who are proponents of letting students show that they have a skill and show that they understand a concept. So the performance-based assessments that we talk about that have been developed in some of the subject areas, language arts, social studies. So we'll see where the specifics are, but that will be work for the Board of Education enrichment, right? But there's certainly changes to be expected in the accreditation standards, because they've changed a number of times. And again, the more that's fuzzy and not clear to the public, you know, what does this really mean for my child, the worse off we are, because that is again, that information sharing, so that parents know where their kids are, that we have a better understanding what happens next to improve that child's learning, because it is very individual. And they talked about, you know, individual learning plans. So something we know from special education, and that I know when I was at UVA, you know, they were talking about, why don't we have an IP for every student, you know, an individualized education plan, not tied to disability, but in general, you know, where's the student and what happens to help? And so transparency and, and standards are part of that. Post-secondary readiness. When he talked about that, it was like, okay, again, he could come and look at this. You saw TSA earlier, right? Schools will provide multiple pathways to post-secondary success, apprenticeship, internships. He said, we need more work-based learning opportunities for students, college preparation, dual and concurrent enrollment, and career and technical education. The CTE program that Eric Fitzgerald has led for years now is second to none in the state. And so we have MTC, right, which is when it comes to technical schools, career and technical schools, MTC is the envy of many school divisions in Virginia. And when Governor Youngkin talked about high tech, you know, the only, the only class of its kind with a security operations center for high school students when it comes to cybersecurity. So the new program for aviation maintenance and all the other programs that we have. And again, we see that at MTC, and just a few weeks ago, you approved a second work-based learning coordinator. And so enrichment, there are conversations, you know, school divisions should have work-based learning coordinators. So this school board and this community has supported career and technical education in Rockingham County. Eric Fitzgerald has done an amazing job to really make Rockingham County known for that. And, and he always tells me stories, you know, when he goes to other school divisions, and when it comes to CTE programs, people say, oh, Rockingham, the land of milk and honey, when it comes to CTE programs, because that's what he's built, and that's what the board has supported, and we're proud of that. And so again, certainly if there's interest from Richmond to see how this component and the science of reading is done, we are all ready to showcase. So we have, we have to improve in other areas, clearly, right? So, but I feel like we are doing significant work in all these areas. Freedom of speech and inquiry. So this was interesting, again, Governor Youngkin talked about, that we have to address complicated and uncomfortable topics in ways that support critical thinking and vigorous classroom discussion without injecting trendy political views or inhibiting free speech. We will support this by providing training to our teachers and school leaders on teaching such subjects and facilitating difficult conversation. He very specifically talked about history and said, we do need to teach all of history, the good and the bad. And I think there's agreement on the board on that as well. We do need to teach the uncomfortable parts of history, but we need to do it in a way, as we've said on many occasions, you know, this isn't about making someone feel guilty for what happened 100 years ago. It is about understanding and making the world a better place by understanding what happens when certain things go on. And again, Bo Dickinson, with the way social studies have been taught in Rockham County, we do try to make sure that it speaks to the lives of our students and that our students play an active role in their learning. I know, you know, maybe next year we'll, we'll be able to go to Farmville. Mr. Cross was planning to attend the Farmville tour guides, you know, had something come up. And again, those are the opportunities that I know you will enjoy, and I know some other board members have been there. I've been there, and it is a place where our students give tours to their classmates in historical settings, where there is uncomfortable history to be talked about, but where it's done, you know, to be talked about, but where it's done, you know, by those students actively learning. I know we've done this at Antietam Battlefield. My daughter was one of the tour guides there. The other one then went to Farmville. And so there's all this history, you know, you've mentioned many times, you know, all the local history we have. And our students engage in that history that's local to them, and then they do this at East Rock, you know, there's an amazing exhibit on how the building of the National Park in Skyline Drive affected the local community. You know, that's what we're talking about. It explains some of the tensions with the federal government and how people lost their land and really how this continues to affect the community. So, so much amazing history, and yes, it's uncomfortable in many ways, but we can talk about it in responsible ways without, again, without making the students feel guilty about it, but it's important for them to learn. And there's so much to learn when it comes to that. And so those are those seven pillars. Again, there'll be a lot more conversation around the standards in where Virginia has slid a little bit over the last few years and what decisions precipitated that, how to create meaningful partnerships with our community and with our families. Certainly, you know, educators have said for decades, you know, we need families involved, right? And that's, that's an important conversation to make sure that families understand where the students are in terms of their learning and how they can improve and be where those students need to be in order to be successful through a variety of different ways. And so there'll be additional conversations to be had. Again, Governor Yonkin just talked about this last week, had a couple of good conversations with our local legislators about it, and so we'll see where it goes. But we're ready, and we're ready to, you know, see what the details are and then act accordingly to certainly improve our system, as we always try. You know, this isn't about saying, oh, no, now we got to do something better. We always said, you know, when we know better, we need to do better. So that was an interesting presentation, and yeah, I'm sure we'll hear more from Richmond on what that may look like. Because again, at this point, it was a 90-day report from the state superintendent, but I'm certain that we'll get more details of what these new expectations may be. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those. I can't speak for the governor, obviously. He wouldn't want me to speak for him, but at least I can maybe give a sense of what I heard.
How, how do you, I think one of the graphs he showed up there, Governor Yonkin showed was a graph that showed math, maybe?
Yeah.
It showed Asians being at the top and whites, blacks, and Latinos. How do you, how do you make education fair in, in math like that?
Yeah.
So what's, what's one of your...
That's great. So, and in fact, I don't, we're not quite there yet with Harvard. So what they did for almost entire year is work with our math teachers on looking at what current assessment scores are and to really look at where do we see the explanation? Because this is middle school, right? So how well someone does in a middle school class, obviously there are a number of factors that can cause that. And so some of the conversations certainly then go to, well, you know, it's not necessarily to say that, well, these are students who do poorly in math because they're Hispanic, right? There can be underlying reasons for that. So for example, if someone moves here from another country, and so...
I was going to ask that.
Yeah, when I came to the United States, math was a little odd for me because the entire terminology was different. I was good in math, and I could do all the math, you know, that they asked me to do at JMU fairly easily, but when it came to talking about it and reading about it, I constantly had to look up stuff because it's just called something different. And so what we have to be careful, for example, with is to not say, oh, this student is struggling with this. And now, early on in their school career, we track differently, right? And we don't provide the support. So for example, in many school divisions, you know, math may be taught in the student's home language, or they could, you know, in their EL class, where students can get the support in their home language to learn math and can show what they can actually do. And so it gets very complicated very quickly. We obviously know that, you know, family support, family income can be tied to it. And it's, it's not necessarily saying, oh, this student is lagging in math. The real question then is, what do we do about it, right? And so in math, for example, there can be some interventions. Some of it has to do, for example, with what students believe about their math ability. So it's called mindset. So many students who aren't doing well in math simply believe they're not good in math. That's not it. It is because early on, when students struggle to some extent, the message that they hear all the time is, well, that's just not your thing, and they believe it. And there is really, really good research that when you work on mindset, so students that are struggling, that you work on mindset. It's the belief that teachers have about what students can achieve, but also the students, what they believe they can accomplish. And you can change that to a growth mindset. I can learn anything. I just need some extra supports. And then to provide those supports that not all students need, just like we do with an IEP, you know, if a student has a hearing impairment, we simply provide services, right? And we need to look at students being not at the same grade level with their peers necessarily in, whether it's math, reading, or other subjects. What are the supports we now need to put in place to make sure that because you maybe read at a lower grade level or were behind in math in grade three, that that doesn't now become the self-fulfilling prophecy that by 11th grade, you know, you're further behind? So what are the supports that that student needs to catch up? You know, what tutoring is available, what activities are available? That's what we're talking about there.
What, what kind of supports are we doing? I don't want to make this long. What kind of supports are we doing right now, especially in middle school area, to get these kids up? Because like you said, a lot of times, children that maybe do really well in math, they have a great support system at home where parents are pushing them and giving them the extra help and tutors and things like that. What about the kids who can't afford the tutors and things like that? Do we provide some type of after-school?
Yeah, we provide tutoring as needed. We have students, for example, the last few years, our summer school focused on reading camps to make sure that in reading we catch up. But that's also part of the work with Harvard, right? And they really are, I listened in on some of the conversations with the math teachers and our division leaders where it's like, no, that's not when they talk about root cause analysis, like what's the real root cause? And then it's like, no, that's not quite yet, you know, we need to dig deeper, we need to, and then what intervention do we select? And so I think that's the point where they're at now. It's trying interventions for those students. So whether that's, again, some people suggest simply high dosage tutoring, or it could be, you know, that students get extra help from peers, because interestingly, you know, when you have students working with other students, the students that are advanced actually learn a lot when they have to now explain it to another student, because explaining something means you really have to understand the material. You can't just do well on a test, but now you have to explain it, just as most teachers will tell you, they learned most about the subject once they started teaching it. And, and so there are all kinds of things we can do, and that's what the work with Harvard is about, what interventions are successful? And they provide that rigorous, you know, world-class data analysis to say, now, what evidence do we have that the intervention we tried actually worked? And so I think that some of the work that Governor Yonkin also talked about, right? Innovation, how do we know that what we did worked? Because for example, with reading, a lot of kids learn to read despite of what we do. They may, some kids learn to read without going to school. So we can't always say, you know, oh, it's because we did this. And so there has to be really a good process of looking at data and saying, okay, here are the two groups, we tried this intervention, what difference do we see in those groups? So that we do the things that work the most. And mindset training, for example, is one. The biggest impact on student learning is actually what teachers collectively believe about their students. So collective teacher efficacy has the highest levels of outcomes when we talk about effect size. So teachers as a group believing that these students can do well, and so that requires work with teachers. Then what students believe about themselves, right? And so it, it's not always just tutoring. It's really, it also has to do with working as a school division to make sure we don't look at the kid, like I always said, you know, the, some teachers looked at me because I grew up in poverty and said, nothing good will happen. And when teachers don't do that, all of a sudden, you know, you open doors for kids. And it doesn't mean the other kids didn't get any help, but I needed different help from other kids. And I think we need, again, that's where we have to focus on what we can provide to help each child be successful.
Awesome. And the last thing I wanted to say was definitely on the local history stuff. I know we do a great job down in Elkton with the families that got kicked off the Skyline Drive. And actually, my, I have family, my, my brother's in-laws were part of that group, family that got kicked off of the Skyline Drive and were given land down below. Many of them wasn't given land, but they were fortunate to receive, to receive land. But I, I, that's one of the things that really come on the school board that I really want to, would love for the division to focus on is, is really local history. And we have so much local history. I was out in the Pineville, Cross Keys area last week and stopped by and talked to a gentleman who bought a home there that was built in 1791. And man, the stories he was telling me of everything that happened there during the Civil War time was incredible. And I, to think that, you know, I sat in a school just four miles away in Montevideo growing up and, and didn't know hardly anything of local history of that part is, is frustrating. So I would love for our kids to know the good, bad, and the ugly. I just don't want English, or not English, but history teachers demonizing our founding fathers the way it was to teach history, how it was, and to go there. So, yeah, anything we can do for local history and doing that, I would love to see.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Shike. Board members, you have in your packet an attendance report for April 2022 and information on the VSBA Conference on Education. If you are interested in attending that, you can catch up with Caitlin. So next, we will move to school board questions, and I will go in the reverse order that I went. Mr. Cross, you'll be first.
I'll pass.
Thank you. Ms. Lauer?
I don't have any questions either.
Okay.
Except how to work the microphone, apparently.
Okay. Dr. McQuill?
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. I pass.
Thank you. Mr. Falk?
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. I would like to request the superintendent look into maybe setting up a study of, of the, the student climate in our buildings and how it has been impacted by the, the two years of COVID mitigation and things like that, and specifically their interactions with one another and respectful treatment of one another. So basically a studying of bullying and things like that. If that makes sense.
Yeah, again, I'll look into what options may be available, and then I'll bring that to the board, and the board can decide.
Thank you.
What do you want to move forward?
Dr. Shike, you have any comments?
I do want to make one quick comment because it came up during public comments. And it's important for everyone to know that when we read stories on social media of how a process plays out, that please be careful. I know as related to Broadway High School, there are a number of stories that keep popping up on social media. And it's important for everyone to understand, of course, because it involves students, you know, we can't talk about any information specific to a case, but a couple of things I can say. And one is that the Facebook posts that talk about Broadway High School not having alerted law enforcement, these are all verifiable pieces to this story. And I know that there is clear evidence of who was told at what point. And Sheriff Hutchison has spoken to that, and I can tell you that from the time an allegation was made at Broadway High School to the principal, to law enforcement being notified was three minutes. There are stories that, again, others contacted law enforcement, that doesn't mean that didn't happen, right? But we often have incidents where multiple people contacted law enforcement, but it was three minutes, and that's important to know. And one of the reasons is that we have worked very hard with law enforcement to determine what the best approach is for these investigations. It's important to understand that when people say only law enforcement is doing something, the school is not. Once law enforcement is involved, we actually stand down. It's very important for law enforcement investigators to be the ones conducting interviews when it comes to potential serious criminal conduct. And so we've worked on our memorandum of understanding with the sheriff to say, when serious criminal conduct is suspected, this is what schools will do. And then we, our staff, don't sit in on the interviews necessarily. Now, we have to do certain investigative steps for, you know, federal law, for Title IX, for all these other things, but law enforcement needs to do the interview. And it's also one of the reasons, I know there's a lot of criticism for, why did, why didn't we immediately notify the entire community? Law enforcement oftentimes investigates for weeks. We've had cases, you know, and you mentioned some of those, where investigations took months. And the more information that comes up on social media about something, all the rumors start going. It actually makes law enforcement's investigation more difficult. So we try to let law enforcement work in quiet for as long as they can, because when they talk to a student or to a staff member or anyone else, you know, who's listed as a person they want to talk to without that person already having received a flood of information on social media. And so there's a, there is a process in place for that. And so if people think that I don't take it seriously or that the school doesn't take it seriously, that's not it. I lost my brother to suicide, and he was sexually assaulted as a kid. And so for me, this is a very, very personal topic. And for us, it's been key for years now, since I became superintendent and started working with the sheriff. I, you know, I wasn't doing these investigations before then, that even though the law says there's a 24-hour notification period for social services over the sheriff, that it is often within minutes and typically within the hour, that as soon as we get that call and we're asked, hey, this is what we're hearing, my first response is call, call law enforcement now. And in this case, that didn't even have to happen. I know that Principal Abernathy immediately contacted law enforcement that then goes through their channels to have the appropriate people at the building. And so I know these cases are incredibly difficult for a community, but from the perspective of how quickly the school reacted and what happened as a result. So again, Facebook posts that say, oh, I heard someone saw a student at the school two days later. These are all verifiable things. And so please be careful, that's all I'm asking when it comes to those facts, because when you, when you then read that the school division just wants to sweep it under the rug or never called the authorities, it immediately sets that tone, right? That what are they trying to hide? And from our perspective, that was an almost instant request to say, we need the professionals at the table to conduct the investigation. And once that happens, there's nothing else we can say. And so please understand that. And again, there are lots of other stories, of course, on social media about it, but when it comes to those pieces of information, those are simply not accurate. And I just need to say that publicly so that everyone understands how we operate and that I would never let that happen, that if I'm told we have an allegation, that we would just hold off on working with the authorities on that, because it is very, very personal to me. So that's all I want to say on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shike. I wanted to share a story with my colleagues because it saddens me. I had a parent come to see me that was concerned about some of the things they had seen on social media, and they wanted to, to the degree that I was able confirm or deny what was on there. And during the course of the conversation, I asked them if they attended school board meetings, and they said, I don't anymore because they've become a circus. And I said, why do you think that is? And they gave me a few reasons as to, as to why they think that is the case. And then they said to me, why do you think it is? And I thought long and hard. And I thought long and hard, and I answered like this. From my perspective, for two decades, this board has worked to address real problems that arose. Lately, it seems like we're working on problems that are invented. That's just my perspective. And that makes me sad, because there's a lot of really serious educational work to be done. Lots of things I'd like to see accomplished before I leave. But we'll continue to address things as they come along. We do have reason to enter into closed meeting, and I will entertain a motion to that effect if you desire.
I move that the board enter closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711. A-one personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 5-0. Thank you all very much for sticking with us, and be safe going home.